And drill.
Okay, I'd like to call this meeting to order at seven o'clock. For the agenda, we have additions under thirteen. So thirteen four is murdered and missing Indigenous women and girls, request for the mayor to attend. And then thirteen five, murdered and missing Indigenous women and girls, two were advancement grant. It's a multiple. And then under, we thought it was going to be shortened. Under eighteen two, Boreo housing. No. Any other additions?
Nothing from administration, Madam Mayor.
Okay, could I have someone move, please? Counselor Lambert, all in favor? Carrie. Welcome to Corporal Jason Barber, whom I'm sure you all received his report Sunday night. Did you? Or was it just me?
I sent Sandra and Clark.
Okay, it's on your, it's on your table then. So, do you want to present the highlights?
Sure. Call volume for the month of September increased compared to August. We had four ninety, four hundred ninety-five calls within the town of High Level. One drug-related investigation was still ongoing. We had twenty-six reported assaults, twenty were common assault. Six were assault with, whoop, sorry. Assault with a weapon or causing bodily harm. Nine charges were laid as a result of these claims. Three were cleared for the complaintant's own charges. And seven were unfounded. We did have a shooting in town, so that came under the one attempted murder. This file's still under investigation. Had little cooperation from the victim at this time. So we're still looking into that. Our crew team has been monitoring that file. Eight reported traffic collisions, six had property damage, one non fatal collision with one charge being laid. One fatal collision and no charges have been laid on that one at this time. Six operating motor vehicle was impaired by drugs or alcohol. Three were given immediate roadside sanctions. And the other patrols were made, but couldn't find the other three. And we also had two charged with operating motor vehicle while prohibited. There's sixty-two liquor-related incidents in town. Most of these people were lodged. We have one found to be unfounded. This is down from a hundred and eight calls we had in August. Three firearms complaints, two were, sure. Three firearms complaints, charges were laid in each instance. There were two calls for possession of a weapon for dangerous purpose, charges related in both those instances as well. And sixty-one calls for mischief at property or obstruction for enjoyment of property. Three charges were laid. Thirty-nine were cleared using discretion and two were unfounded. There are also two noise complaints we had scored as municipal dialogue. One was cleared with discretion and the other adding sufficient grounds. There are also six reported thefts. One was cleared otherwise. Five of them are still under investigation at this time. And we had fifty-one calls, including wellbeing checks, this general public, suspicious persons, animal calls, false alarms. And we also had fourteen mental health-related calls. Those were dealt with through the hospital. That's pretty much it. If there's any other questions?
Is there any questions from counsel? It's not?
Concerned.
No, I'm just concerned over the large volume of calls. You guys have had a half capacity.
Well, we've only got a couple people down now, so.
Okay.
We're just going through that transition period. We've got a couple people pending transfers, so hopefully we'll be getting them back filled from other capacities coming in.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Have a good rest of your evening.
Have a good day.
So, the September twenty-sixth minutes. Everybody's had a chance to read them. Could I have someone move if there are not? Sorry?
Sorry, under, I'm sure the council will point this out. Guitar lessons, not the guitar movie.
Guitar lessons, love movie.
I don't know if that matters.
With that change, could I have someone accept the minutes, please? Deputy Mayor, all in favor? Carrie. The report from Corporal Barber. Could I have someone move, please?
I'll move for information.
Counselor Anderson moves for information, all in favor? Carrie. So for my report, sorry I didn't get a chance to send it to you. On September thirtieth, I attended the Friendship Centre where they had drumming prayers and smudging and a reflection upon what reconciliation meant. The Friendship Centre had partnered with North Peace Tribal, the Village FASD Society, AHS, and the Town of High Level to highlight the meaning of reconciliation. And they had numerous activities at these places to bring awareness to people. And Elder Francis then smudged the new cultural park, which is a partnership between the Friendship Centre and the Town of High Level with a focus on reconciliation and creating common spaces for all cultures. The park will feature a monument for truth and reconciliation, a monument for missing murdered Indigenous women and people, and for the Indigenous veterans, as well as a learning nook, a teepee village, and a history walk, which will connect the cultural park to the museum in High Level. So this is a very exciting time for us. We're just awaiting the grants. Construction did begin on the park. They did, I don't know if they poured the pad yet, but they ran the gas into the fire pit. So that part, and they put pilings in for the teepee, which they were expecting to at least have that erected for the end of the month, but I never went over to see if they poured the pad yet. On October first, we attended the Fireman's Ball, our first one in three years. It was held at the, at the Marois. And it was to celebrate the efforts of our fire department over the past few years, as well as hand out long service awards. It was nice to see community members there to support the fire department. Long service awards went to Alora Wardley and Craig Morris for five years. Firefighter of the Year belonged to Jake Walsh. Rookie of the Year was awarded to Peter Rousseau. And Officer of the Year was awarded to Rodney Schmidt of Kenton. On October fifth, we attended a candidate's forum, or I did. Kudos to Shawna Lee Jessiman and the library for taking the lead in holding this candidate forum. And thank you to the three candidates that did show up and answered questions from the mediator. On October eleventh, today, we had our RCMP meeting. And that's my report. Questions? If not, could someone move it, please? Counselor Welkey, all in favor? Carrie. Deputy Mayor.
September twenty-ninth, I attended a screening of Guitar Lessons. October first, also attended the Firefighters Ball. And October fourth, the candidate's forum. I thought it was the fourth, not the fifth.
Oh, maybe I was wrong. So I've been wrong on October fourth.
And that's all I have to report.
Thank you. Counselor Anderson?
September twenty-eighth, I attended the High Level Library Board Meeting, which they're in the process of doing budgets. October fourth, I also attended the candidate's forum. And kudos to the library and the manager and Shawna Lee for taking that on. I think they did a great job for short bonus. And I thanked the three candidates that did show up for that endeavor. And October seventh, I attended the Community Education Committee, Northern Lakes College. Not much to change there, although they, their nursing program is completely full. I think it was seventeen that they have going through that program. That should have, if they all graduate, would come out as LPNs. They're still waiting for their trailer to come up here and be put up here for woodworking or welding or whatever they choose to run out of it. And they're also waiting for their truck to do class one driver's license. So they ordered a new truck and they still haven't got it yet. So that's still kind of been the process. There was also some, the, the, school division is also trying to work with them in some of the things that they could use the school for, like their industrial kitchen, to maybe put on a program or a training course or for certified chefs, that type of stuff. So that's kind of in the works as well. And that's all I have.
So the seventeen people, is that slave link High Level?
No, that's High Level.
Just High Level? Wow, that's awesome.
I believe it was seventeen. I think, it was, it was quite a number. Quite a bit more than I had anticipated. I have the numbers here. I'll, I'll get them to you when I find it. But yes, it was from Box Lake to Rainbow Lake.
Very good. Any other questions? Okay, thank you. Counselor Jessiman?
Evening, everybody. On September the thirtieth, I attended the Bushy Feeding the Fire Ceremony at noon on Truth and Reconciliation Day. And as well, in the afternoon, I moved over to the Friendship Centre to take in the smudge ceremonies and the prayer ceremonies. And again, as the mayor alluded to, is very well put on. Really enjoyed my time there and learned a lot from that day, so that was a great day. October the first, attended the Fireman's Ball. And it was great to be able to get back out and be able to take part in the recognition of the volunteer fire department as they're a big part of our community and do a lot for us. So it was nice to see everybody having a great time, seeing that it was well attended. So that was a great evening. And then on the October the fourth, attended the forum, candidate forum session at the seniors' centre. So I was very well put on and I as well appreciated it to be able to attend and listen to the, to the candidates that are putting their names forward. So, and that's it for me. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ten, ten nurses.
Ten, but still awesome. Thank you, Counselor Jessiman. Counselor Lambert?
On October first, I also attended the Fireman's Ball. And on October fourth, I attended the candidate's forum. That's all I have to report.
Thank you. Counselor Welkey?
September twenty-seventh, I had an FASD Society meeting. Nothing to report on that. And that's all I have for meetings this session.
Thank you. Before we go on, I just, I'm sorry, I was going to copy this for everybody, but we did receive a letter from, from Alberta Forest Products. A letter of support for a multipurpose evacuation center. I'll just read it to you. "I'm writing to encourage you and your cabinet colleagues," it's to Minister Horner, "to consider providing funding to the Town of High Level for the above project." "As you know, High Level is a major manufacturing center for the forest industry. Moreover, the community is a service center for our industry in the Northwest. Our industry shares the town's values of being a good neighbor in times of need. The town is to be commended for seeking to offer comfort and amenities for those affected by fires, floods, and other natural disasters. We see other potential benefits of this project. Attracting and retaining labor is a major challenge for our industry. The challenge is even more acute in the remote communities like High Level. The additional recreation and cultural spaces associated with this amenity will help to support our goal of a strong workforce attracted by vibrant communities. Moreover, we also see value in having additional training and education space close to our member company operations. Thank you for your consideration." And it's signed by Jason Krips, who's the president and CEO. And the board approved this, so good news. Hopefully Minister Horner is going to be the Minister of Forestry or he'll be in there somewhere to champion them. So I just forgot all about it, sorry. So could we have someone move our counselor?
I'll move the Counselor.
Counselor Anderson, all in favor? Carrie. Counselor's action list? Any questions? If not, can, I just have one and I think I ask this every time. And maybe you tell me every time. When are we getting the upgrades to this?
November.
November, okay. I won't ask till the end of November.
First meeting in December, why they not here?
For the, the audio issue.
Well, I have one question.
Okay, go ahead.
The entrance lights on Main Street, the one, that one's been out for a long time. What's the?
You mean the side?
High Level's.
The northern light, fancy light on, on the north side.
Counselor Welkey, we have a new car coming in, should be in next week now.
Okay.
Had to replace some electronics, which are all that common right now.
Thanks, David. Thank you.
I'm glad you asked that, because I've been asking a long time.
I know, probably have been asked, but.
Yes.
I don't believe it's on the action list, but did we ever get that fence put up along the back alley?
Yes.
Was it? Yes.
Yes, we did. Drive by and have a look.
Thank you. And the sidewalks in the road, they're milling that, they've got it half done already. That's fantastic.
Yes, we got excellent contractors, Madam.
Yes, they were very fast.
They don't mess around.
Any other questions on the action list? Could I have someone move it, please? Counselor Welkey, all in favor? Carrie. Upcoming events, I just have a question again. When is Midnight Madness? Probably nobody in here knows.
Maybe she's meeting or Chambers having a meeting.
Yeah, we're having a meeting, but I believe it'll most likely be the twenty-fifth of November.
Twenty-fifth?
Yep. Last Friday.
I just had some people asking me, I guess they, okay, thank you. Can we have someone move if there's no other questions? Deputy Mayor, all in favor? Carrie. Monthly report from counsel. Yeah. CEO, maybe you could give counsel an update with transportation regarding the First Nations and wastewater?
We've, Chase Milligan, who's the regional director for Alberta Transportation, was at our meeting with Minister Panda in Edmonton, and he's reached out. And we're just trying to get a date that works for myself, Director Straub and Danny Young out of Chase's office and Mr. Milligan himself. So we expect that to happen this week. There still seems to be some clarification needed on exactly what we're asking there, but that's just what we have for.
Also, Madam Mayor, I could, just to let the counsel know that Solicitor General also reached out after our meeting with Minister Shangill, just on some of the concerns we had. And I did explain that that meeting was more just to say, you know, if you're looking at our police service, please keep in mind this is the unionist of our community. But they felt that there were some other issues they could address with K Division on the contract. So it was the ADM, who is their contract liaison with the, with K Division, that had reached out. So he was going to reach out to K Division and ask about some of their ongoing staffing issues. And why the town is paying for policing when the RCP does not have a full complement.
Okay, thank you. Is there any questions from counsel? Oh, sorry.
Director Shangill, is it possible for the new rescue unit to come to counsel one night so we can have it too?
We'll be here on a break. It's actually parked outside right now.
Okay. When we take a break.
I just got a text that it's a no front.
I have another one. What continued flooding from the health and safety? Continued flooding at the airport?
It's a broken conduit, I think it's what it is.
So Madam Mayor, the power services that feed the building come down inside the building and they're buried underground through the wall. Apparently the conduit is cracked and water, it's not a flood, but water trickles in around the electrical.
Okay.
So that is planned to be done this fall and excavated and find out why the conduit has moved. It is thirty years old, so.
Oh, I, you haven't heard of any flooding at the airport?
It's probably better defined as water infiltration around the electrical systems, which isn't good either.
They didn't work on the weekend. Because I stopped there to see what they were doing on the floor.
Oh, yeah, so Madam Mayor, that portion is shut down right now?
Yeah, I did. I went in and looked at it.
Yeah, so that, the first portion you have seen is just the removal of the surfaces. And later this week, I think tomorrow or Thursday, the rescue equipment's showing up to prepare the sunboard and get ready for recording. So Crew Two will be here this week.
I thought they would work through the weekend.
That crew was gone when they left, so another crew has to come in.
They left the door open, so I went in and looked.
There's people working on the weekends, so our staff are there, so we do.
Yes.
Replacement of the lighting at the airport for the runways. Was that not supposed to happen this summer?
Yes, it was. We're having a hard time finding LED lighting. I reached out to our engineer, who's integrated airport systems. And he's supposed to get back to me today, but I haven't heard back from him, so. I would bring an update to counsel, either the next meeting or committee hall as to where that's sitting. I don't know if we will get started on it this year.
Can you hear? Carrie?
Yes, yeah, actually the sound is really good.
Oh, good.
Thank you.
So does that compromise the funding?
No, not apparently. I have to get some hard dates. The supply issue is an issue throughout Canada. And they actually have courses on now, and seminars, not seminars, but meetings, trying to help different government bodies with these supply issues. I don't see it affecting the funding because it's a supply and demand. Our power truck was awarded in twenty twenty-one. The tender went out in January of twenty, this year. And we won't see the chassis till March of twenty twenty-three. And final delivery of that unit in the summer of twenty twenty-three. So that's the type of waiting periods we're having with these supply issues right now. And that's just a simple truck and ball. There's no computer chips and stuff apparently for the hardware, so they're on a limited supply.
Okay, thank you. The health and safety report, who's handling that?
That, I.
Okay, so it says something about the external audit for the MD of Big Horn is scheduled to start in October. How does that affect High Level?
Mark is doing their external audit. So most of it's done online. I don't think he's planning, I don't think he actually needs to be on site. But the municipalities trade off doing audits for each other. And we have somebody coming up here and doing ours as well this year.
I think to maintain their independence, they have to do an external audit.
Yeah.
Okay. And I have one last question on Haley's note. When she went to check with FCM and, and on the wastewater, she said if the Denny, we're a willing partner, our twenty-five million dollar wastewater treatment facility would likely be funded by FCM at sixteen million with the Denny Taws nine million. So have we looked into that?
I can speak to that. So I spoke to the gentleman at the trade show at Alberta Municipalities, and he said they're not a grant organization. There was another project where I think they contributed a two million dollar grant, which was unusual for them. They're a funding agency, so they lend the money at a much lower interest rate than what we could get even through provincial resources. So yeah, the sixteen million dollars will be alone. It wouldn't be a grant.
One of the things we are hoping to do in our conversation with Alberta Transportation though, is if we're looking at a Water for Life situation, they have the nine million dollars for their system. So the profits could come in and be looking at sixteen million on our side to fund it, which would even be less than the percentage they normally pay in Water for Life.
Yeah, I was just, because I had not heard this last part of the FCM. But maybe they were saying there was a grant somewhere that they knew about with the feds. Could you clarify that with Haley?
Oh, yeah, no, there is no grant they know of. They're just going to do some law papers.
Okay.
The part that FCM volunteered to do when I spoke to him was to do some research on qualifying the First Nations as a municipal partner, going back to look at the original wording of the treaties or any other agreements. But they've done that in other situations and have had some success, so.
So have we asked them to do that?
I had talked to him about that. Haley had actually spoke to him. We provided the follow-up information.
So we looked into it?
I think Keith met with Haley just to clarify what we're looking for, and it's on her list right now.
Not sure.
Okay, yeah, it's on her list that she needed some clarification from Keith and that she was going to send her out.
So the big issue is, we're going to meet with Alberta Transportation and see what all that stuff looks like. See what the funding models look like and then go forward from there, if there's anything FCM can do for us. We first have to clarify if we're approved or denied, or if it was one specific fund or both funds. Apparently we are eligible with one, but it's the lower funded ratio. So we want to make sure we're clear before we push the agenda forward.
But if FCM has done this for other municipalities and other provinces, perhaps they could find that information for us and get it to us?
Yes, Madam Mayor. First, we have to see what provincial is available for funding programs and whether or not there is any issues and that those issues will be brought forward to FCM and then they can help us find ways to resolve them. Because initially, initially, the Water for Life, which is the ninety, ninety percent funded part, it was, it was returned back to us that they didn't qualify as municipality.
That's what I mean, Keith, because I, we specifically said that. And I think this is what you guys have discussed with FCM, and FCM has, has partnered with, had municipalities partnered with, so maybe if they could show Alberta that model from wherever, Manitoba, or wherever they've partnered, maybe it would make it easier for Alberta to recognize.
Yes, Madam Mayor. The, the issue at hand is more in the communication side between a consultant and the funders. It wasn't, there was no formal application made, so it was on word, and that, that funder is no longer there, so. It was a discussion and, and it was a communication that said, no, it wasn't eligible, it wasn't actually, it wasn't actually applied for. So we want to take it to the next level, the meeting with the higher level of funding people to get it clarified that this is in or out. And until we're absolutely sure, I don't think we should press forward with pressuring if, if the communication was wrong from the consultant.
Okay. Can I have someone move the reports, please? Counselor Lambert, all in favor? Carrie. Um, new business, RFD for proposed office closure.
Director Phillips will present that to council.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Administration is just proposing an office closure schedule and also an additional one floater day for the schedule. Currently, we have our floater days, stat holidays, and days in lieu, covering three working weeks during the holidays in December. And after administration and CAO looked at the schedule, it would be more beneficial for staff and also for communication out to the public to have one work week as our holidays during December, and it'd be easier to schedule our year-end, easier to schedule our payroll, and also look at any discrepancies that the public or residents might have at the end of December, instead of giving them a schedule of a day here, a day here, and a day there for three weeks. So this is the proposed schedule, and because it does have an additional floater day, and that is required for council to approve that additional floater day, our chief administrative officer only has the authorization for one in our HR policies. So administration is looking for that approval and also the consideration that the vegetary impact of the one floater day.
So what's a floater day? Not freebie, why?
Well, it's a floater day. Normally, we're given one floater day in between December twenty-third and I believe it's January fourth, or January second.
Is that something just our municipality does?
It's just, it's part of our human resource policy, of our statutory. Um, most, most municipalities do give floater days. I think there's some, I've, I've been in situations where they give two or three throughout the year, so they spread them throughout the year. We give one in between December twenty-third and January second for the Christmas holidays. So if a stat holiday falls on a weekend, we can also give an additional table, a Friday and a Monday, and it's, it's the CAO's discretion of when that day is taken.
So if we give you this floater day this year, does that mean we have to do it every year?
No. No, it's just a one-time. And majority, this would just be the office, office closure for, um, the office that does not need that, um, that floater date. There's other facilities that possibly might be open, like the pool, so it would just be a swap for a holiday. They might take, say, the Monday to second and work the Friday. It, it all depends on the facility schedule, but this would be for the office closure.
Madam Mayor, this is, it's only once every six years that both Christmas and New Year's Day fall on a Sunday, so they don't affect a, a weekday. Uh, next year, New Year's Day will be on a Monday, so that staff will actually fall on that, on that following Monday.
So if staff here gets a floater day and gets paid for it, isn't every staff going to get it?
Yeah, it definitely will be available to all staff. It's just it might not be that exact day, because, um, like the arena and also the pool, the facilities would not be closed for that entire week. They, they might have some funding, so they would just switch, do like flex days and switch it around. But for the office closure, this would be the week.
Okay, yes.
So, um, but that would require an amendment to Policy one sixty-five dash ninety-seven five point three, because it says next three holidays falling on a weekend will be granted on the subsequent weekday. So that doesn't allow us to give the Friday off.
Um, it does say that it, well, I guess the stat on the second, you mean, you mean the first for the second?
Yes, under the policy, I mean.
Yeah.
Yeah, that, council has full discretion over temporary changes to policy.
So, yeah, this is the proposal. We definitely, it, it could be for information. But we just thought it would be a lot easier for communication and just for staff to state that there's one week without the office being open, rather than spreading it out.
Counsel, what's your wish? I can see where it would be convenient.
And, and it doesn't need the additional floater date. Um, it's just, uh, just a request for the office closure, so.
What's the rest of council?
I think this fits in with our new strategic plan, and this is not uncommon. I'm not sure about Terry with provincial governments. I know many departments get multiple sort of, I wouldn't call them floater days, but bonus days over the holidays. I know our office, we follow the court calendar, so the court's basically closed through the entire period. So our staff automatically get three sort of bonus days. Um, and depending on the year, the last number of years, the way the holidays fallen, it's been four. So I would be in favor of this and amending the policy this, for this one, except for to allow the previous day to be given subsequent.
Do you have floater days?
No. I'm, I'm jealous, but I'm okay with this, so.
Jealous?
I agree. I think we should do that. Yeah, I'm fine.
I'm fine with taking the day off. I'm just not fine with the money. I know.
It's also in, uh, Ms. Phil, or Director Phillips, out there. Some of us will be monitoring the phones and the emails during that time to make sure that any emergency issues are dealt with. So we're not really getting it completely off.
Monitoring the phone and doing hard labor is different.
How refreshing, remember, we'll be on there.
Exactly.
Come on, Scrooge.
I'm not. I.
I support it. I'm supportive as well.
Who's making the motion? Everybody better be here Canada Day then.
Probably on vacation.
No vacations, Canada Day. Counselor Welke, all in favor? Carried.
Thank you.
You're welcome. So the municipal indicators?
Uh, Madam Mayor, uh, council, uh, we've done a little bit of a briefing note to introduce council to the wonderful world of municipal indicators and what they actually mean and how they relate to the town at high level. So there are thirteen indicators that Municipal Affairs puts out every year. Um, I sent you the link to the Alberta Municipal Affairs' back, um, website, and anyone can go in. There is a dashboard there, and you can take a look at any municipality and see how they're doing with these municipal indicators. So as noted in there, most of it, I'm not going to go through this, uh, as I've highlighted before, you guys can all read. But the two areas that, uh, one is a perpetual and one is the one-time this year. The one-time this year is we did not meet the May first deadline for the audit. We knew that was not going to happen. In fact, we discussed that with council back in, uh, I think, May and June. And some of the issues were our auditors, um, staffing problems and their inability to come on-site. And they did finish it just a few days after the extension date, but council did not have a meeting until August, so when you're able to adopt it. Um, what we're looking at here, Jerry and I've had that discussion, we're looking at, uh, uh, when they do the pre-audit in November, we will get a list of dates and a list of accomplishments that will take place during the audit, and this will not occur again. The second one is the ratio of capital, uh, capital, or tangible capital asset replacement or renewal versus our amortization rate. As you can notice from the little sheet we put together, this has been an issue for as long as these measures are in place. The town has, has created a bit of a, or sorry, there's been a bit of an infrastructure deficit created over the last several years. But as noted in my note, this is a rolling average. And in the last year, in twenty twenty-one, the town actually, their annual ratio is one point two eight to one. So we invested one point two eight times as much into infrastructure as what our amortization was. This year, again, that will be higher, so as this rolling average over the next few years, I expect that we'll see something above one, uh, in the twenty twenty-two indicators. But it also reaffirms council's decision to start investing into infrastructure. So this is just for council information, unless you have any questions.
Any questions from Congress?
Can we amalgamate with our regional municipality of Wood Buffalo?
Take a look at.
They have one point one four billion dollars in reserves.
In reserves, yeah. There's a number of rural municipalities that have nine figures in reserves.
But no one's even close. A hundred and sixty-eight million is great news or something like that, but one point one four billion, like.
That's what happens when you live next to the oil sands, I guess. Yeah, it would be nice if they'd share it with the rest of them. And that's why Ford McMurray.
Well, that's why they dissolved.
Because all into it.
Well, it's true.
Just one thing that, that, um, these are sort of offsetting, and it's not, and it's been a little bit by the side. This council has purposely made that decision, but you'll notice that our accumulated surplus has declined over the last few years, about one point seven million. Some of that will recover here. But you'll also notice that our debt-to-revenue percentage is decreasing as well. And that's because you've been saving some of that debt for some of the larger projects, and we've been relying on reserves to fund things. So those two are, those two correlate with each other?
Plus the fire we got.
And we've just got a bunch of money we're putting back into that reserve account, yeah.
Sorry, did we get an update on the opportunity costs?
Um, we actually had a meeting with, um, Colin, Sean, and Brenda from the EMA branch, and they came in. There was no promises or discussions. Pretty much their communication was that will be in the minister's office, depending on which minister is in the office, and they won't hear anything about that until I, they, they said by the end of the year, they're hoping. But as for the opportunity cost, we probably won't hear anything until a new minister or the original minister, um, stays in. But they did have a discussion with us about the ineligible expenses that we do have, and that will be a meeting in the near future in detail, going line by line with that. But, yeah, there was definitely no promises at all for the opportunity cost.
They essentially said that they, they can sit down, we'll go through the ineligible. I told them, she keeps biasing this by calling it ineligible, uh, expenses, but that we'll go down line by line. They, they are sympathetic to the situation we will put in and realize that it, it may exceed the rules. Uh, what was Colin's comment? I just need to find, or we need to take this to the person whose level this, this decision rests at.
Yeah, is that MacGyver?
No, so this one, this one will be within the civil service. The opportunity cost.
No, I mean the minister.
It was MacGyver, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, so I think this has been, I think, I think they knew there was a change in minister coming, and they've been just not making that, pushing that decision up until there's a new minister in place. So it will mean probably a meeting out of there, the new minister of municipal affairs.
Probably would have been easier for an outgoing minister to make that call.
Yeah.
All right. Thank you. So the RFD for the first reading to Ninety Second Street and one hundred and fourteenth Avenue, borrowing bylaw?
Director Phillips will present that to council.
So I thought we were going to do, uh.
We are.
Oh, it's a Tuesday after all, says.
Yeah. Um, yes, we are. So for the first process, it's just us setting a borrowing bylaw for the full cost of the town. After, after that, we can state what that debenture looks like, whether it's fifty percent local improvement or eighty percent debenture, and that would come after we incur expenses. So, um, basically, ACFA and EMGA states that we have to have a borrowing bylaw in place, and then that is our first step to start anything else after that with debentures, so.
On the first reading.
All in favor? Carried.
Next time, we're going to group our items together.
Keep you guys on your toes.
Yeah, keeping my steps.
We have to have a public hearing on that?
Uh, yeah, and it's to be each.
Oh, I printed everything out.
Yeah, it just has to be advertised. This, uh, as long as the borrowing bylaw is in place before we incur expenses, we're fine. That's why we want to start this process now before the spring.
So do we want to set the date?
Two weeks from now?
I would wait to see.
Months from now?
They go through.
What?
Madam Mayor, I would wait to see the process that they have to go through before, and then they can bring it back on October twenty-fourth, whatever the next meeting is, and then you can set those dates.
Okay, let us put that by, because the, I mean, we have, so the borrowing bylaw, that first reading, that's just for the borrowing. How we ask that be paid back is a separate process. The local improvement charges will be done at a different, and that's notification to the landowners and petitions and the whole bit, but that.
To the both second and third reading in a month.
Yeah, so, yeah, so this, this, this process here, um, we can bring that back, give you an idea of the timelines, but we may as well have it done by Christmas.
But, but, but what he's saying is we have to have first, second, and third reading of any bylaw. Doesn't matter when we're gonna.
No.
We have to have a, we have to have a public hearing?
Yes.
Yeah, so we'll advertise for the two weeks of the first reading, and then we'll come, bring, bring that, bring in a second and third reading and do the.
But normally, we set the date when we say the first reading for.
Okay. This meeting, how long?
This was, this was here the same, for my, at the first reading, borrowing bylaw receives first reading, advertising late one. It talks about the advertising requirements around that, uh, advertising. Then it explains how we have to have the first week and the second week, two consecutive weeks, and then start a fifteen-day petition period. The petition period of fifteen days starts after the last day of the advertising in the newspaper.
So we don't have, yeah.
So twenty-one, fifteen.
Okay.
Um, if we aim for the last meeting in November, that would be.
Twenty-eight?
Yeah, that would be the time.
So all amend my motion.
So I'll amend my motion to set the public hearing date for November 28?
Are you okay with that, council? Did you get that, Ms. Beaton?
Yes, public hearing date for November 28.
Okay. All in favor? Carried.
And just as an FYI, it does say that, you know, to observe petitions in case they come up that the borrowing bylaw receives second and third reading. So to go through those processes first before it goes to second and third.
Well, you keep on them. So what are you doing? Am I missing something?
We have two more items.
Oh.
13, 4.
13, 4, which is the attendance for murdered and missing Indigenous. So you're going to speak on that?
Nope, not on that one. I'm pretty good with yourself.
So I've been asked to speak here. I'm just seeking approval from council?
Sorry, just to point a clarification. In the email, it says that it's at the Friendship Center. But in the next item, it says it's at the Rural Hall.
There's three days, three days of it.
They initially had, when they sent it out, it was supposed to be the Friendship Center, but they have a wedding at the Friendship Center, so they're moving some there to this Rural Hall.
Does someone want to make a motion, or no?
I'll make a motion.
Thank you, Josh. All in favor? Carried. The next one is the Tourism Enhancement Grant.
Madam Mayor, we have two applications for $5,000 each under the Tourism Enhancement Grant. We have one from our tribal council for the event that the council's just discussed, which they believe you have the outline there of the events. They expect, expect over 200 people to attend the event from the Southern Territories and all over northern Alberta, and that's over three days. So that meets the criteria under the Tourism Enhancement Grant. And the second one is from the High Level Public School to host the 2023 2A Girls provincial basketballs in March 16th and 18th. And they also expect 200-plus attendees over three days from all over the province in that case.
Yes.
So for the basketball credentials, do they do hotels, or do they typically bill up the students?
No, they do hotels. When we did the 2A boys several years ago, they were, they were on hotels. There was no billing.
We used to sleep on the floor when we were tough.
Or the life, or.
And strangers. When I was a kid, it was all billoted, it didn't matter.
We slept in the classrooms on the floor.
Is billing actually even done much anymore?
It wasn't while I was coaching.
No.
We did sleep in the school a couple of times on tournaments, but no, not in people's homes.
But if you have male coaches and female players, makes it very awkward.
That's why you take a female shower.
So.
And these both fit the criteria, you said, right?
Yeah. Yeah, these will both be very large events for the community.
Yes.
We're going to do with alternative one?
Okay, for both?
For both, yes.
Okay. Alternative one, Councilor Lambert, all in favor? Carried. So thank you, everybody, for attending our council meeting. First one live in a couple of weeks, or a couple of months. We've had difficulties with our audio visual. So we're going into a closed session now. So could I have someone move to?
Oh, move 15-1 through 15-4.
Oh, sorry. Okay, yeah, I forgot. Okay, question for information, moved by deputy mayor. All in favor? Carried. Now, could I have a motion for?
I'll make a motion.
I'll make that motion.
Okay, council adjustment. All in favor? Carried.